Okay, you are good to go.
Thank you. And good evening, welcome. This is the Planning Commission work session for Cottonwood Heights. It's Wednesday, January 6th, 2021. We're going to start with our statement about an anchor location. And that is pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2-2074. The Chair of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission hereby determines that conducting any meetings of the Planning Commission within 30 days after this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. And I think the date that refers to is the date the agenda was published, which was December 31st, 2020. So that's our official why we're here online still. We'll run through our business meeting agenda and the items on it, starting with the Planning Commission rules and procedures. And then we'll have a discussion about the Cottonwood Heights Parks Trail and Open Space Master Plan. Additional discussion items, and I don't see on our work session, but we do have a, an item for public hearing for our business meeting, which will be for commentary, and that is for a bed and breakfast conditional use. So go ahead and turn it over to Andy, I guess, are you running for the city today?
Sure, Mike will be joining us shortly. He's just on a phone call. But we can go ahead and get started. Looks like the first item for the work meeting is to review the business meeting agenda. So if you want, we'll just go over that one business item. And then we can dive into the other items, but Sam has, should have an overview ready for you on that.
Great.
Yeah, I can share, kind of the slides will go through in the meeting and give you guys a bit of a background on it. Okay, so this application is a conditional use application. Let me change my screen a little bit so you can see the whole thing. A conditional use application for a bed and breakfast on Highland Drive, 6632 South Highland Drive in the residential office zone. Staff is recommending approval of this application with an added condition. And I'll get to that a little bit later in the presentation. As a bit of ordinance review, bed and breakfasts are allowed in the residential office zone, which again is our underlying zone here. As a conditional use, the code defines them as a dwelling occupied as a permanent residence by an owner or renter, which serves breakfast and provides or offers sleeping accommodations. Kind of comparing that definition with what we've received from the applicant in the application and narrative. The applicant has confirmed that a permanent resident will reside in the basement of the home and will sign a yearly contract to live there. Staff has included a recommended condition of approval that the applicant demonstrate this occupancy by a permanent resident prior to the business license renewal each year so that we can verify that that condition is being met. The applicant has also confirmed that the permanent resident will prepare and serve breakfast for the guests. And the floor plan indicates multiple bedroom areas that accommodate the permanent resident as well as the guests. Looking a little bit at the site plan, the applicant is not proposing any expansion to the building or alteration of site components. Their proposed bed and breakfast use would be entirely contained within the existing home there. If alterations are made in the future, relevant permits and review would be needed to make sure everything's compliant. The only thing that I would mention here is that due to the change of use, our building department will require several building code upgrades that are made. A building permit and inspections for these code upgrades will be required, but they won't affect the building's footprint. As far as parking goes, there is existing off-street parking available on the north side of the property. And we have a basic map here on the screen that shows these parking areas. Based on the city standards for parking that we get from the ITE parking manual, it's sufficient based on the proposed use. So it provides the two spaces for resident and three spaces for guest. As far as public comment goes, staff has received one phone call comment and two written comments. The written comments were forwarded to the commission members, but I wanted to kind of go through the content of these comments. Some of the concerns were repeated multiple times. So the first kind of nature of concern that was expressed was what is the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast? And this is a great question. Whereas a short-term rental requires no onsite management or presence, the bed and breakfast has that requirement for a permanent resident to live on the property. Again, staff has recommended a condition of approval that the applicant provide evidence of this upon the business license renewal each year, since that is a really important component of the differentiation between bed and breakfast and short-term rental. The next kind of common concern that was brought up was again, will there be any changes to the building footprint or a new building constructed? Again, the applicant's not proposing a new structure or any changes to the footprint at this time. Change of use does require those, those code upgrades, but they don't affect the building's size or height. And then the third concern that was brought up was related to code enforcement. There were some concerns expressed over some code enforcement items, namely, I think I have a slide here, some shipping containers that were onsite at the address. And then also some possible listings of this property on short-term rental sites. These photos don't call out the address explicitly, so it's not firm indication of its listing, but a possible concern there. As far as code enforcement issues go, any open code enforcement cases and issues would need to be resolved before staff will issue the business license. Business license is required before they can begin operating. So we would make sure to address those issues before issuing that license. If violations occur after issuance, we will address them through subsequent code enforcement cases. But these were some good concerns that were brought up and something that I'm sure you guys will consider in your discussion. And kind of moving forward toward the end, this isn't really needed until the business meeting, but we have some model motions. Again, staff does find that the conditional use application requirements are met as outlined in the staff report and in city code. But we are recommending approval with the condition that the applicant demonstrates the occupancy by the permanent resident annually at business license renewal. So that hopefully gives kind of an overview of this application. If you guys want me to go back to any slides, just let me know.
Do we know who the current resident is?
I don't have that information. It could be something you request of the applicant if they will be attending tonight.
Now, is there anything the applicant would need to change? I mean, if they decide to change from a bed and breakfast down the road to a short-term rental, would they have to reapply or?
So a short-term rental isn't possible at this address based on the zoning. For them to do a short-term rental, they would need to be zoned multifamily, part of a condo project with eight or more units and fronting on a private street. And so those seem like pretty unlikely odds theoretically if something were to change and down the road that became possible, we could look at that, but I think it's highly unlikely at the time that they'd be eligible for that.
So being a Airbnb, is that a short-term rental or is that something different?
Airbnb is a platform where a lot of short-term rental users advertise their short-term rentals. Theoretically, if this conditional use permit were approved, the applicant could list the licensed bed and breakfast probably on a platform like that. But I think in general, the listings that are seen on those sites tend to be short-term rentals. So again, there were some concerns brought up over, well, is this going to just be a short-term rental? And staff does find it important to verify that the distinguishing factor of the permanent resident is met, which we're hoping to address through that recommended condition.
Okay.
What's staff's position on the shipping containers?
So staff has been following up with the applicant to make sure that those are removed. And again, we would require full removal before we'll issue the business license for this proposed use. Shipping containers are not allowed in the city unless they are part of a permitted construction project. So they are not allowed at the site. This is a code enforcement issue that we're working through and, and would be sure to resolve and fold before issuing.
Yeah, sorry, I'm on the call. We do have a plan in place. We'll have them out in the next 30 days to get the shipping containers out. They were in flux going to our other property in Garden City, and then with COVID, we just haven't taken occupancy at another place yet, and they'll, they'll be out of here there shortly.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to ask you just for a point of order that you, in the work session, it's our chance to just discuss things. If we have a question for you, we'll, we'll ask for your input.
I apologize.
Thank you for that. That's okay.
We have any reason to dispute the information that the shipping containers were asked to be removed in October?
Staff was not made aware of a code enforcement time, a code enforcement case at that time. We're following up with it now and be sure they're removed before issuing that license, since that's kind of an option for control that we have there. I, I can't speak too much to past code enforcement cases.
But this would be an existing code enforcement case, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and we can follow up with our code enforcement department to make sure that it's, you know, closed out properly. We were not aware until that public comment came through that there was a potential case. That's something that we can verify with code enforcement and find out the status of that. And again, make sure it's resolved before moving forward.
Is there any reason this is not a current enforcement issue that they should deal with before we consider this application?
And procedurally, staff felt it appropriate to require that enforcement before the business license. And but I can defer to Shane or perhaps Mike on, on that if needed.
I think it would be the commission's decision. If you want to wait for that to resolve before taking action, we would, we could continue this. Procedurally, holding the license on compliance achieves the same effect. They don't get to operate any new use until that's resolved, but that's the commission's decision, I think.
Didn't we see an application on the same property in the semi-recent past?
You did. We had a rezone application at this property earlier with an approved rezone from R18 to RO. Received a recommendation of approval from the commission and then was approved by the city council.
Is anyone concerned that they're in the process of advertising this property for this use at the present time, even though the application hasn't been granted?
I just pulled up the Airbnb, Bob, and it, I mean, my concern is that there's three other listings that are within 10 houses of this location that, you know, are already an area that I think if we're, if we're trying to control this, I'd love to see us control all of it and making sure that from a code enforcement standpoint, we're on top of this stuff. So I, I'm, I'm not concerned as much about the, the bed and breakfast, but I am, I'm concerned that if a shipping, if shipping container's been there for that long, I, I hope that we're on top of this stuff and that we, we make sure that we, we're careful and methodical about this. I, I still share the concerns we talked about when we talked about this property the last time, about the parking situation. If they've got two different, I mean, there, there could be a situation, they've got two rooms for rent. There's four vehicles plus the potential person that's living there that's going to say, well, I've got one vehicle and then a significant other that's also, you know, part of the, the builds that are hosting. So six vehicles, you know, I, that, that's, that's a squeeze on a corner lot like that in one of the major thoroughfares through a neighborhood that I think could teeter a little bit in terms of Cottonwood Heights. I think if we're supportive in terms of how this little gateway into this little neighborhood goes, I think this neighborhood will regenerate and potentially thrive. And if not, it just, I would, I'd hate to see it languish. So I don't know what that means from a policy standpoint, but I do mean, I do feel like we need to be very vigilant about how we proceed with this project.
I share your concern, and every time we have a parking issue come up, I'm reminded of the Even Steven situation where they came in and said, oh, we have plenty of parking people. We'll be very transient and just grab their sandwiches and leave. And if you go down to that location now, every single surrounding business has a sign which says, no Even Steven parking. And so the fact that someone says that it's going to be okay does not in my mind necessarily mean that it's going to be okay.
I appreciate those sensitivities. Oh, continue.
I was just going to say, my, my question, if it's a bed and breakfast, why do they have two cars each? I mean, they're just, it's like going to a hotel. You usually don't take two cars to a hotel, so.
Right.
What's the person?
As far as the parking goes, what we do use is the fourth generation ITE parking generation manual, and that's what we can go by and require. Based on the numbers in that manual, they have sufficient parking in this proposal. And so I think it's definitely something important to be sensitive to, but we also, you know, want to make sure we're being consistent with the manual we're using and enforcing it that way.
Thank you, Sam. You know, that, that was a question I had looking at the, the site aerial and their parking. The scale of that image, you know, typically a width of a parking stall, Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong, is 11 feet or is that depth?
It's usually eight, eight by, eight by, or nine by 18.
So nine, so is this, is this pad area 36 feet across? Because I looked at it from both, both perspectives and it seemed awfully tight for four cars. And with two, two shipping containers, it's clearly not possible.
I haven't measured the, I haven't put it to scale. I'm happy to, in the interim between our meetings, run a calibration on it and see if I can get you an estimate there. Or if you request information from the applicant, perhaps they know, but I'm not positive on that.
Because I think this speaks to a lot of the issues we're talking about right here. And part of it's the degradation of the neighborhood is, you know, if, what happens is they're constantly parking on the street and this is an entry area to this whole neighborhood, it's, it's an issue.
Does the bed and breakfast that serves, when you have to serve breakfast, does the health department get involved in the inspection of the kitchen in a bed and breakfast? And if so, has, has that been done?
So the health department is usually consulted at the business license point. I would follow up with our business development specialist to see if that's something she required on the other bed and breakfast. But if it were required, we would need their sign off before we could issue the business license.
So speaking of the other bed and breakfast, I'm not sure which one you're referring to, but we did have a bed and breakfast come before the commission about six months ago, I, I think.
Correct.
And you can find, you can rent that now on Airbnb for $198, $196 a night. And they don't mention anything about breakfast. And I do worry that, you know, there, there was concern expressed that that was just a mechanism for them to get approval and then they were just going to rent it as short-term rental. And I know that, so we've put into place this recommended condition of, of having someone live at the premise. I, I just worry that we're maybe going to fall for the same thing again.
Sure. The definition in city code is somewhat vague in the sense that it doesn't give exact direction on how the breakfast needs to be served or a mechanism for us to maybe verify that. But I understand the concern and it is something we can follow up with code enforcement as appropriate if we find it's not being met. But yeah, I understand your, your concern there.
Sam, is there a full kitchen in the basement of this house?
I'm happy to pull up the floor plan or I'm sure the applicant could verify for us. I believe there was a kitchen area on both floors.
I think we probably need to verify that of kitchens as they describe. The coming from the, from the basement and being served in the basement.
So I don't know if you guys are able to see this floor plan image. It's maybe a little bit hard to zoom in, but here we have the permanent resident space and then a kitchen. And then on the upstairs rental area, looks like a living room and also a kitchen.
Showing the parking layout.
Seeing that.
Sorry, let me switch the screen that it's sharing then. Thanks, everybody. Okay, it told me I switched. Are you guys seeing a floor plan now? Okay, awesome. Thanks for bearing with me. I'll try to maybe zoom in a little bit more. So on the upstairs area that would be for the bed and breakfast guests, it looks like a kitchen is marked here. And then on the permanent resident area, it looks like there's also a kitchen area.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions on this item?
Yeah, I did have a question.
Quick, it's about 44 feet wide.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
Jessica, I think you were trying to go ahead.
Yeah, and then I'm going to see, can you hear me? Right now?
Yeah, we can hear you. You're good.
Okay, great. I was just quite, the question that came to me was on signage. You know, I do see like a private residence on an Airbnb and the bed and breakfast is simply different. Is that way off base to say this should be advertised as a commercial business? If it's, if it has that qualification?
Sure. So signage is not mentioned explicitly as part of the definition. Signage in the residential office zone, I believe, requires ARC and Planning Commission approval. So that would probably be a separate process in and of itself. I don't believe any signage is proposed at this time. I'm not sure if we are able to require that, but that is a good consideration.
It seems like further definition of the bed and breakfast should be addressed in, in the code going forward because I, I mean, I, I've designed a bed and breakfast in Jackson and, and, you know, there, there's quite a bit that has to go into these. And I mean, for one thing, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have individual kitchens in each of the units if you were planning on serving breakfast to everyone. And, you know, I think we, we were set up on the, the project on 3000 East where they each have their own individual kitchen. Probably should have been a sign that they were going to be rented individually. I just think this is going to continue to become, be used as a mechanism to accomplish this goal of getting short-term rentals approved. And we probably should address it going forward. I don't know what that means for this one, but it, it seems problematic.
I think that's a good consideration and certainly we identify kind of issues in the code as we use it. And I think that's a good thing to look at if we're so directed. And I think most likely for the current application, we would need to use what we have in the code as it exists. But I understand the concern for moving forward.
I think my, my opinion on this one, we treat it like every conditional use. So if there are concerns or perceived negative impacts that can be mitigated, which it sounds like there are, then the commission can impose conditions. And if, if they cannot be reasonably mitigated, then, then that would be rationale for a vote of denial. Otherwise, it's entitled to approval. But, but you're right. Yeah, I think the code definition of bed and breakfast was made long ago, probably before Airbnb was a thing or was certainly so prevalent. So that, that probably does need to be revisited and revised in these zones where we do see these, you know, these projects that frankly are concerning. We, we have the concern here that it will be used for Airbnb. And the mechanism we have right now is enforcement after the fact, when we can prove it, rather than, you know, a better definition or set of regulations up front.
My problem with enforcement after the fact is it then puts the burden of proof on the city. And if you're going to enforce before the fact, then the burden of proof is on the applicant.
I, I feel like, like we're fairly unified in terms of how we're feeling from a commission standpoint. But I, and I realize that we need to use the laws that sits right now. But I, I'm, I'm with Jesse and with Jessica and Bob on this. I, I like Jessica's point that, you know, if you're going to commit to, to this world, maybe signage is more appropriate. You're, you're, you know, you're in a line of businesses. Act like a business. Don't act like a residential property. And to Jesse's point, I, you know, it's not that, I, I'm less troubled by the location and more troubled by the fact that I would love to see more architectural change. This, to me, looks like a chopped up house, not like something that's committing itself to be a bed and breakfast. So, and I don't know what that looks like in the code, but I, you know, to Bob's point, rather than doing it retrospectively, I would love for us to have something that says, listen, if it's showing up in Airbnb or, you know, however it needs to be phrased, that, that we allow for code enforcement with teeth to, to say, if, if we see things that show up there, that's the evidence that we need. So anyway, I know that's forward thinking, but relative to this project, I still share the concern that there's no sidewalk on this property. It has a very buffered turn as it comes into the corner. It's not a typical Utah corner street. And that makes the parking unique, I believe. And it's also a gateway into a, into a residential neighborhood. I, I would share the concerns of everybody that lives in that neighborhood, that how this looks and how this is handled and how the parking looks is significant.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay, let's, let's, we do have this one on our business meeting agenda, so I'd suggest we. On, thank you.
I'll stop sharing.
Discussion. Our next item on our work meeting agenda are the Planning Commission rules and procedures.
All right, thank you. Let me pull those up. So I sent a copy of the rules and procedures with the packet for you to review. What we wanted to do was just that, it's been a number of years since this has been updated. We're starting a new year. We wanted to get your comments and feedback on anything that might need updating. And then just, just make sure everything is up to our current rules and procedures. So I'll share the PDF. We can go through. Staff has done an internal review of these and I'll just highlight a few for your information. We wanted to update update the, the calendar to match our current calendar. As you know, we have several months where we meet on the third Wednesday. And I don't think that's reflected here on the meeting schedule. Right now, it says first and third Wednesday of every month. We also wanted to add in some language about holding these digital meetings, which we are currently doing. Make sure that that is current with our current standards and procedures. There, most of the, the corrections or updates that staff is looking at were just minor. We want to just clarify that four commission members are needed for a quorum. Add some language references where applicable to sections of the zoning ordinance for additional reference. But nothing really too major. What we want to do procedurally, we checked with Shane, any updates to this? Because this is not codified in the ordinance, does not require a public hearing. So we just wanted to get feedback from the commission and then take that, draft a few changes and the city council can adopt the changes. So with that, I'll just leave this up and I'll take notes. I don't know if anyone has anything in particular that they'd like to see changed or cleaned up, but, but we just wanted to leave it open for your discussion.
Thanks, Andy. Any discussion commissioners?
I don't have any challenges with it. I just, I do always appreciate a red line version just to know what I'm looking at just in the future as you guys send us documents that have changed. It's just nice to know where the changes were from the original document. So I'm, I'm, I'm not worried that there are any gotchas in there, but that's just a preference.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Once we have the final red lines that are going to the city council, we'll, we'll send you a copy of.
I've had concern for a while about the amount of time that we're allowing people when they want to submit written input for hearings. And we take it essentially pretty much from the afternoon of the meeting. I, I would think that we ought to expand that so that we have the right, if we want to, to waive the time. But people are advised when they receive their written notice that anything they want to submit needs to come in 48 hours before the meeting.
You know, Bob, that brings up a point that. You know, Bob, that brings up a point that, something that I've noticed too. And it's not just the public comments. That's, I noticed it especially in complicated applications like the PDVs that, you know, I realize that you're trying hard to work with the applicants and allow them to be responsive. But they're working so closely up until a point where we haven't received packets in a manner that gives us an amount of time to review them and really go through the information that we're seeing. So I'd like to see, and I believe it's in here somewhere, and I'm sorry, I did not go through it today. So I can't remember the language. But that they are limited to their cutoff as well, so that we're clear in what we're seeing. You know, we've seen some that are updating so fast that they're showing us old images of things they've updated. And it's very difficult to understand, not only for us, the commissioners, but for anybody else who's trying to follow along.
The commission had this discussion many years ago. And that was the reason for, I believe that there's a provision here that gives a cutoff of the Friday before a meeting for the submission of materials. I don't know that we can do that for people that are making public comment and participating in public hearings. But as far as the applicant is concerned, I think that we can impose a cutoff. And I think that it's in here someplace, so.
Twenty-four hours for the public hearing? For their written notice?
Well, I would think that if people have the written notice and the written notice says forty-eight hours of the preceding Friday, or whatever it may say, that we can hold them to the same standard as we can the applicants.
There may be open meeting requirements for the public hearing. So I'm not sure if we are able to stop taking comment. Shane, do you know?
No, that would be my concern on public hearings, that we are required to hear everyone that wants to speak and the date, time, place of the hearing are published. And so I don't know how that we cut them off before the actual hearing. As far as applicants, I think we have more control over their submissions. Yeah, here's the submission deadline right down here on F.
Right, I don't see, as I scroll through this, any discussion of written comments from the public being submitted by a certain time. But this section F, here's the mission deadline, says submission by the applicant. Go ahead.
There is that language, when the notice for the meeting is sent out, that written comments have to be received by the city by noon the day of the meeting. And then if it's on the agenda for a public comment, of course, then it opens in that manner. And that anything received after noon, the day of the meeting, by the city will be forwarded to the commission for review. So I think that language is there, it just may not be in this particular document.
Maybe we could move that to noon the day before the meeting.
Is that, what are you trying to accomplish so that we can have a chance to review it? Or what's your, what are you trying to accomplish, Bob?
I was in a comparable meeting where we had counsel on both sides. And counsel finished making his pitch and then handed us a stack of documents that were like six inches thick. And the chair of the meeting said, oh, we'll take those. And I said, no, 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 I object. Because if we accept them, then we're presumed to have read them and factored in what it is they've had to say. And I don't think we want to be in a position of having people drop something on us three or four hours in advance and then be presumed to have read it. And so that's the reason I want to stretch it out.
The way that I'm reading this section F actually, it looks like it says all written submissions by the applicant, the proponents, or the opponents of the request shall be submitted by 5:00 PM, at least three business days before, so by Friday. And that, I think, we have not followed that policy. As you've read, what we typically put on the agendas is the public can submit written comments up till noon the day of to be forwarded to the commission. So these are the types of things that we want to make sure everything's consistent moving forward and up to date. It sounds like your preference is to give a little bit of additional time, probably bump that back. I don't know if you feel like maybe this, the Friday deadline would make sense. Maybe we keep it this way and then update the agendas. I think we can do a little more research on what legal requirements there are. But I think we'd be happy to do whatever your preference is.
Thanks, Andy. And Sam made a good point, which is it probably is codified in public meeting law.
And my concern is in the context of public hearings, that is not public comment. It's not presentations by applicants, it's public hearings. I don't know how we set a deadline before the public hearing. I think that we have had to do that in the context of the pandemic and these electronic meetings, simply to get, be able to have time to get the information out. But that may be a bit of a stretch. In other words, I'm concerned about public hearings when we have rezon applications, when we have general plan amendments, things like that. Normal public comment, I'm not concerned about that. And I'm not concerned about meetings where applicants are presenting their project. I think we can hold them to a different standard.
I would guess that the Friday before language was previously reviewed by some council somewhere and accepted. And that's how it got into the ordinance.
Yeah, that would be me.
You will notice on this, though, this is the old, old city logo. So I think this predates pretty much everyone else here, I think. Yeah, that's why, you know, we think it's time for an update because we weren't even aware of all these standards in here. And our agenda differs, and we want to make sure it's cleaned up. So that's kind of the intent here.
Thank you for sharing it. And the discussion is good. I think, you know, as far as public comment, we always want to accept it and to hear it. I think to Bob's point, we want to also have the opportunity to actually look at it. If people expect that we have before a meeting, and this is not a full-time job for us. It's basically a volunteer position. So we're trying to make sure that we do that. And we're really paying attention to the information that comes before us. And we just want to be clear that if we say we're able to see it, we actually are able to see it. And same goes to the submittals by the applicants. I'd like to have enough time to vet it, to go visit it, to make sure I understand what they're asking. So maybe just a review of what's existing in, you know, our Utah public laws as far as holding public meetings and seeing how this, I maybe have already done that, how this compares to that is a good first step.
Okay, I've taken some notes on your comments. This is exactly the feedback that we wanted. We'll go back and do research and recommend some updates based on your feedback.
There's some hours for some bright young associate.
Here's the law. Public hearings, we are required to hear everybody who wants to speak about the topic. And that is the focus of my concern. We are not required to take public comment. So we can set, that is not part of open meetings law or anything else. We can conduct a meeting without taking public comment. We choose not to do that. But because there are no constraints on whether or not we provide a public comment time, we can construct rules to control how that occurs, including having a deadline for written submissions that are being given by somebody who wants to make public comment. The same would hold true for applicants. We can require them to provide information in advance of their presentation so the commission has a chance to review that and digest it before the meeting. So I don't think that any legal research is going to change. I think what I've just told you, the key is going to be where we are required by law, by statute, to hold a public hearing. And that will be in connection with a rezon or a general plan amendment. There may be a few others, but those are fairly rare. We're statutorily required to hold a public hearing.
Okay, so I assume we'll see this again with, at least a redline version.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide something. I don't know if we were planning on bringing it back.
Okay.
For like a formal discussion. But I certainly think that's something that we can distribute and you can review further. I don't know, Mike, if you have any thoughts on that. I mean, it's been years since we've updated it. Another couple of weeks isn't going to make a huge difference. So if we send redlines out and we want to discuss it further, we can definitely bring it back.
Thanks for putting it on the agenda and running through it with us and asking our opinion. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan.
All right, thank you. This one is me too. Let me bring this up. Great, okay, you can all see this web browser, the image of, I think Crestwood Park.
Yep, looks good, we see it.
Okay, so our last meeting, we took some time in the work session to show a draft of the Open Space Master Plan, which we're working on. Staff has been working closely with the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. Got feedback from them that I'm currently incorporating into the draft document. We had, we did not have a lot of time at the last meeting to go over things and take feedback in detail. And so what we thought would be good is to create an interactive online map that included the information that we're working on in the open space draft. But as something that is easy for you to just click through and then make comments on. So this is what we're working on. This is a story map, an online map that we've created with tabs on the side. Eventually, we'll prepare a final version of something like this to be included with the Parks and Master Plan. So what I want to do is just, again, do a quick overview. And then we will be sending a link to this map to all the commissioners. And then, of course, we would love to get your feedback. So just briefly click through these tabs. So we have prepared various layers. The map corresponds to the text in each tab. The existing open space map. This, our Parks Committee has recently completed an updated inventory of the existing parks. So that will be included. But for now, we're showing on this map all of the formal city parks. And then we have private open space, which includes HOA, open space, and public amenities in the various apartment complexes. We have semi-public, which includes church fields, school fields, country clubs and golf courses. This is all just for reference so that we can get a good sense of what open space is available to different groups in our community. And to help give us a sense of what improvements could be needed, what areas are underserved. We've got some comments here on the side about, in our public surveys, we've taken lots of comments from people about what they'd like to see in our existing parks, future amenities that should be considered as we make improvements for our parks. Future open space, we've mapped out some options for potential future development opportunities or open space preservation or acquisition. Give some highlights for Union, our Fort Union Plan. Or rather, the student study that was done prior to our Fort Union Plan had some interesting recommendations about when these commercial areas at each node along Fort Union redeveloped, they could be developed to incorporate plazas, pedestrian walkways, or other forms of open space. This neighborhood on 23rd North of Fort Union is underserved. There's no public park really for the residents here. There is the school and the library. But there is an option for a potential park somewhere in this neighborhood. We've got lots of open space opportunity at the gravel pit with that future developments and the old mill as it develops to incorporate plazas, green space, that sort of thing. I want to make sure that we got those on the map. Ferguson Overflow is another one that we wanted to make sure got included in the future open space plan. This is one that we've talked about as the potential for not only to serve the trail users, but also to be used as a park for the city, potentially even as an off-leash dog park. And then, oh, we've got City Hall. City Hall, as you know, has some like retention ponds. We've had some people make suggestions that maybe some additional amenities could occur there, small event space, something that could be used by the community. And then foothills, open space. We'll include some discussion about, this is all private open space currently. There is potential, is probably the comment that we receive most frequently in all our surveys is people enjoy using this open space and want to see it preserved if possible. Moving on to trails, we've got a few existing trails, Ferguson Canyon Trail, Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, the trail around Crestwood Park, and the East Jordan Canal Trail. We also mapped out just a few little small neighborhood connections, like the, you know, connecting different pieces to the parks. So Bywater has some connections. The Rec Center and Butler Park have walkways into the surrounding neighborhoods. Some HOAs have pedestrian walkways. So we've tried to map those out to the best of our abilities. If you're aware of anything in your neighborhood that's not on this map, we'd definitely like to include it. These are the existing trails. That gives us a sense, again, of what's here now and where there's room for improvement. So the proposed trails is, as you can see, there's a lot. Most of these trails that are proposed go through private property. And so additional planning, public outreach, design will be required before any of this goes forward into actual development or construction. But these are the opportunities that we saw from our open houses, from the existing plans, and from comments from the Parks Committee. I think that we went through a lot of these, so I don't know that I'll go through all of them one by one. But just generally speaking, we've got some big ideas for potential connections. A new trail along the freeway, multi-use path along Fort Union and Wasatch Boulevard. There are a couple different alignment options for some sort of a trail along the Little Cottonwood Creek. And then a whole bunch of natural trails connecting to the Bonnigan Shoreline Trail on the east side of the city and the foothills and up the canyons. So we've included this, and this is something that you'll be able to look through your neighborhood and see if maybe there's a place that you would like to see a trail that's not included here. Or if you have a preference for one trail over another that's proposed. Or perhaps, you know, as I said, these go through private property. Or perhaps, you know, as I said, these go through private property. It may not be something that we want to pursue with any given trail option. That's the type of feedback that we'd love to get from you. I've included some information here on the side tabs for you to review, just explaining some of the, the, you know, basic description of, of what's being proposed. And then the other new thing that is being included with this plan is the idea of creating planning areas throughout the city. These are just general kind of neighborhoods, surrounding activity centers, the parks, schools, commercial areas. To give us a general sense of, to look closer at each area of the city to see what amenities exist and again, what improvements could be made. Can click through. These links here take you to each area. You can also click through the tabs on the side. We'll zoom in. This includes everything on the previous maps that we looked at. So, and then you can just click. Sometimes you gotta make sure you click on the right thing, but can click the trails, the different open space. It'll bring up the name and and you can click through to each area to get a, a sense of what is where. So this is what we've been working on, just trying to put something that's relatively user-friendly, that you can look through your neighborhood. See if you have any suggestions. I'll send this out after the meeting tonight. But something that we'd love to get your feedback on.
What a great tool. This is, this is really nice to see. I, I do have one and it's not really specific. So I'm not sure, but this is more of a general comment, as you know, as, as all these planning efforts are going forward and sitting on the planning commission and thinking about how, you know, I would love to see us be able to, and this maybe is a comment as, as the city looks towards the update to the map, to the general master plan or the, excuse me, the general plan is that I think we as a planning commission, since we have direct impact on, you know, new, new neighborhoods, new subdivisions, new development, and, and being able to better incorporate all of these kind of planning efforts into those, you know, for instance, a few years back, that there were two new subdivisions approved off of Bengal and Danish that don't connect, that their open space was a vacant lot as opposed to some kind of a trail system that would allow someone to walk their dog from Danish Road to Bengal Boulevard on a, on more of a trail, those kind of things. So not specific to this necessarily, but I think it expands on, on what's happening, the good things that are happening here with, with the open space planning is that as the general plan is reviewed, maybe we look at finding ways to incorporate.
It's a great comment. We, we have been trying to look for other similar opportunities. You know, for instance, here, this property that's currently vacant across from Golden Hills Park. We've marked potential for future trails as that develops. And we've got the different sections at the different commercial nodes, just as a way again to indicate that, you know, this is the Smiths on Bengal, if that were to redevelop someday. Be nice to have some pedestrian connection somehow there. Same with the others on Fort Union to have connections through here and to the school and library. But again, that, that's the benefit of this is that you'll be able to zoom in and out, interact with it, click on things. And if there's a spot that we've missed, certainly you know your neighborhood better than anyone else. And we'd love to have your feedback on it.
Thanks for sharing that. Commissioners, any comments, discussion?
I would just say it's exciting to see the opportunities. So I appreciate the good information.
I love the formatting, Andy. I, I really think this is going to be an important discussion. We have such a range of walkability and bikeability in this city from places that there's literally no place to walk in neighborhoods, like in places that it's just, it's almost embarrassing. And it was just laid out that way long before any of us were around to places that when people are putting new developments in, as Chris pointed out, that there's just no reason why we can't think how things should be connected to one another and where the people are going to go when they're not in that neighborhood. Instead of just allowing a developer to impose, well, this is all I'm going to be willing to do. And whether it's, whatever we need to codify to, to, or encourage, you know, to, to help people contribute to a plan, I think it's, it's wonderful. This is a great format, I think.
That's excellent. That's right up there with Matt's light bulb display.
I have to give the credit for all of this technology to Melissa Blue, our GIS specialist. We work together, but I, I think it looks very nice and very professional. That was all Melissa's doing. I, I'm excited that we have this to present and excited for you all to look it over.
Yeah, please compliment her. It's really great.
Lightbulb level quality. We'd love that.
All right.
Very much.
A minute left. Just switch over to our, we do, do we have any other discussion for our work session? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
A motion that we adjourn?
All in favor? Okay, we'll see you in a minute on our business meeting. Thank you.